Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Well, good evening and welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting of October 10th. We're at the Bennington Fire Facility. And my name is Jeannie Jenkins and I have the pleasure of chairing this board. And I'll ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Good evening, I'm Gary Corey.
Hi, Tom Haley.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
I'm Jean Conner.
Hi, Sarah Perrin.
Hello, Bruce Lee Clark.
A full compliment!
How about that?
Absolutely. We're all here.
Yay!
And also with us this evening is our town manager, Stu Hurd, Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes every meeting, and Josh Boucher from Cat TV, who we thank very much for staffing the camera. All right, so first up as always tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim, would you lead us?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. And now, Jean, would you please read the Town's Vision Statement that guides all our work?
I'd be happy to. And it's extra special because it's Indigenous Peoples' Day. "Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life."
Thank you very much. All right, and next up is the Consent Agenda. For the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion that has not already been had on the minutes or the warrants? Seeing none?
Can you separate them out? Because I think several of us will be abstaining from the minutes.
Okay. All right, so the minutes. Could I have revised motion?
I would revise that motion to, just to adopt the minutes.
The minutes. All right. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none? All those in favor of accepting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those abstaining, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, and now for the warrants. Could I have a motion to accept?
So move.
Okay.
Still seconded.
All right. Any discussion on that? Seeing none? All those in favor of accepting the warrants, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, great, perfect. All right, next up is public comment. And as we all know, I think, a public comment is comment for the good of all. Please try and limit your comments to no more than three minutes. And when you come up, please state your name and your town of residence. And also, please, please remember that this is a time for comment rather than for discussion. If you have something that feels like it really is a discussion item, then we will put it on a later agenda. So, first up, I have Sam Rustino discussing or sharing a comment about voter attendance.
Good evening, Sam Rustino from Bennington, Vermont. A lot of things have changed from the primary into the general election. And most of you folks here probably know what I'm going to be saying, but for the ones that listen, or wherever they get their information. We're lacking in town in communication. People don't read the banner, they don't watch Cat TV, they don't come to the meetings, they would rather listen to their neighbors. And if they should ask questions, we've announced many times, our town offices are open. Stu's phone is open. For any questions, comments, or concerns, he'll get back to you. He gets back to me. I find it that in the absentee ballot, the voter declaration does not get signed. That's mistake number one. It's a little confusing this year because of that barcode. I spoke with the town clerk, and they said, "Don't worry about the barcode. So just stick it in your envelope, stick it into your signed envelope." They have a drop box outside, it's secure. Town clerks check it from time to time, and if you're really that paranoid, drop it off in person at the town office from 7:30 to 4:30 in the afternoon. For the ones that vote in person, you don't have to worry about that. We have district changes. There's no more 2-2 or 2-1, we have a District 2. And then we have a new district, which is District 5, which we have adopted Pownau. So when you go and announce what district you're from, it might be a little confused compared to if you didn't go to the primary. We're an aging community, people get confused. So between now and November 8th, I'm going to be reciting, "Vote, vote, vote." I want the numbers to go up. It's appalling to see that we live in a community here that people just don't want to get involved to come out and vote. We have to bribe them a little bit to get donuts at a fire department to come out and vote. Be it known, I have a Facebook page known as Bang to Vermont Community Town Info. And whatever is posted on the town Facebook page, I fire it back out to the general public. So if anybody's out there wants questions, comments, concerns, I'll talk to you at 2:00 in the morning. And on a sad note, most of you have heard that Rose Telver passed away. My condolences. So tonight's meeting in her honor. Thank you again.
Thank you, Sam. Next up is Jenny Dewar to talk about Harvest Fest.
Hey there, I'm Jenny Dewar. I live in Pownau, but I am the Executive Director for the Better Bennington Corporation. This is Lauren Vining-Barsati, who is my co-coordinator for Harvest Fest. I could not be doing this without her. She is brilliant and amazing. So just want to let you know some stuff that's going to be going on on Saturday, the 15th, between 10:00 and 5:00. We have four stages of entertainment that's at Merchants Park, one in front of NAPS, one at the corner of Pleasant and School Street, and where's our fourth one?
Merchants Park.
Merchants Park. Oh, Lucky Dragon. We have lots of activities, including pumpkin carving and painting. They will, there will be adults that are working with the kids. Kids can't touch knives. Anyone who's teenage and up will have to sign off their life, you know, sign away and just say, they're not going to sue BBC or anything if they tick a finger, but we're going to watch over that very carefully. So people will buy their pumpkins and be able to take them away with them. And then we're going to have some large pumpkins that everyone can contribute to painting, and those will be decorating downtown afterwards. We're going to have chalk art on the street, we have face painting and hair braiding, we have medieval combat demo in the afternoon, we have lots of outdoor games, both for big kids and little kids. There's an escape room hosted by Mission City. Some of the events or activities are free, some do cost something. We'll be selling tickets at the info booths. We have two info booths. Lauren's going to talk a little bit more about those in a second. And the tickets that are used for the activities that are, do have a cost to them, like the pumpkins, they'll buy tickets and then go to the pumpkin booth to get their pumpkin. We have lots of vendors, we have food trucks, several of our merchants are doing outdoor serving for local spots like Harvest, I'm not Harvest, sorry, Farm Road Brewing is going to be outside, Belly's Deli is going to be outside, Angry Egg is going to be outside. I believe Madison's is doing a beer garden outside, but it's all contained in their area in front of their shops. Lots of the merchants have sales, all of that will be up on our website, so you could take a look to see what's happening, it'll also be on the map. And we have some competitions, and Lauren's going to talk about those.
Yeah. Thanks. Hi, I'm Lauren Vining-Barsati from Pownau. And we have a window decorating competition that's going on. You might have noticed some of the merchants downtown have already decorated for the competition, so you'll be able to go to the info booth and vote on your favorite window, and the top three windows will be announced at the end of the day. And we will draw tickets from those three winning jars, from people who voted for those three winning jars, and the folks who win that will win a prize as well in downtown dollars. And then we have as well a gift basket raffle, and I think we have about 15 or 16 of the downtown merchants who have contributed baskets, so you can enter to win one of their baskets. So all of those will be up for grabs, a dollar per entry. And then we also are going to have a guessing game, so there'll be jars filled with different items, kind of harvest-related items, and you can guess, make an estimate of how many are in there, and the closest winners for each one of those will win $25 downtown bucks. And then last but not least, we have a cornhole tournament happening on School Street from 10:30 to 1:00. If anyone wants to try their hand, you can sign up online, it's on the website and the Facebook page, and then it'll be open for everyone to just play on their own afterwards. Thank you.
Fantastic. Any questions?
Thank you to our select board members who are volunteering, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Awesome. Yay, thank you. That's wonderful. All right. And then for another event, Kelly Carroll's coming up to talk to us about the monthly River Walk.
Hi, Kelly Carroll from Bennington. I just wanted to let you know about two events that are going on on Saturday, October 22nd. The first one is the Wollumsack River Walk Downtown Walk. And this walk is going to be a meet the candidates walk. So to piggyback on what Sam said about voting, this is the opportunity to meet the local candidates in an informal setting. So you'll be able to hear their thoughts on important issues and ask them questions about what's important to you. So please join us on Saturday, October 22nd at 10:00 a.m. It starts at Peoples Park. The walk goes up through the Wollumsack River Walk area, it goes over School Street, down, or over Park, down School, down, I always get mixed up on this, down Pleasant, over School, Main, and ends at the Splash Pad where there'll be some coffee and cider donuts and an opportunity, like I said, to talk. So if walking isn't something that you're able to do or you want to do, then just join us at the end at the Splash Pad, and then that way you'll be able to have your opportunity to ask the questions for the local candidates. The second thing I wanted to tell everyone about is also on Saturday, October 22nd at 1:00 p.m., the American Legion Riders are hosting something called Chicken Shoot Bingo. There are no firearms, but if you like bingo and you like cards, this might be something that's silly fun. Everyone, it's a $25 entry fee, there are 10 games, and everyone gets what they call three strings of cards. And a string is just three random playing cards, and they're taped together. The person will draw the card, instead of having a bingo ball, they draw a card, you use bottle caps to mark, and the first person to get three bottle caps on their string actually wins, and each person gets three strings. Has to be across, can't be diagonal or straight down like in bingo. But it is a fundraiser to support our Veterans Fund. So again, it's Saturday, the 22nd at 1:00 p.m. at the American Legion and Northside Drive. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that's everyone I have signed up. Is there anyone else who has a public comment tonight? Seeing none, we will move on. So next up, we're really very, very happy to have the Bennington Police Department in the form of Chief Paul Doucette and Lieutenant Cam Grandy come and talk with us their quarterly
So good evening, everyone. Paul Doucette, Chief of Police and Public Safety Director here in the town of Bennington. And tonight, as Jeannie said, I brought Lieutenant Grandy with me. We're going to try to get Cam up here to speak a little bit tonight, so I don't dominate this performance. But we have a lot going on, and we have 20 minutes to talk to you, and we want to answer all of your questions as best we can. We, too, we were going to promote the event this weekend, but that's already taken care of, phew, one thing off my list. But before we do get started, I was surprised that Kelly didn't promote this. We want to just let everybody know, and I don't know if you can zoom in on me here, we are participating in Socktober at the Bennington Police Department. I'll hold it still, just so you can get that QR code. Jonah and I worked really hard, I just asked for it, Jonah really did it, for this QR code. So between the 1st of October and the 31st, you can drop off socks at the Bennington Police Department for Socktober. And the socks are going to be donated to the Veterans Place and the Bennington Coalition for the homeless. Lieutenant Grandy made a beautiful box, it's right on the windowsill at the Police Department. We have been emptying it on a regular basis, so if you go in there and there's not a lot of socks in there, it's because Cam has them in his office, he's trying them on to see what size they are. No, all kidding aside, they have to be new socks, we'd like them dropped off, and then at the end, we're going to connect with Kelly and give her these socks. But we're really into this QR code thing. I know people are laughing at me at home and in this room, but we think that this is fantastic. You scan that QR code, it's going to bring you right to the town's information, or the town site, and the information is there. But the bottom line is, drop the socks at the Police Department. Socktober.
We were very successful last year.
Yes.
Would like to be our donation this year, so please, please participate.
There's some pretty cool socks in the box, too. Like, I don't want to dwell on it, but, you know, just saying. I mean, I wore these special socks, I don't want you to zoom in on these, but look, these are not official police socks, but they say "police" on them, just in honor of Socktober. So they're not official, you know, it is, they're supposed to be black, but whatever. I just thought I'd wear them for tonight.
I didn't want to steal the positivity, but last year, they raised about 900 pairs of socks, the BPD did, so thank you. And hopefully this year we can do better. There are four other locations around town, the American Legion, the VFW, Command, and NSK, so, but BPD, I'm sure, is going to win the competition, but, thank you, thank you.
I'm not competitive, Kelly, I just want to say. All right, so I just wanted to make sure that we were all aware of that, let's get serious here for a little bit. So where are we at? Where are we at in the community? There's a lot going on in the police world. I know it's been, it's been written in the banner, we've all heard, since January, we've had 17 firearm-related incidents in Bennington. That is way, way too many, one is too many. But I just want to put that out there, that my staff is working diligently with our federal law enforcement partners and surrounding agencies in efforts to curb some of this violence that we're seeing. We are doing our best to stay on top of this activity, and we are confident that the last incident up at 7:15 Main Street, a couple weeks ago, we should be able to make some arrests on that. Scary stuff, you know, involving drugs and guns, and, but, you know, I want to assure the community that Bennington is a safe community, and we just, right now, we're dealing with a lot of issues, and that includes issues in the entire state of Vermont. I've had the opportunity to speak with Commissioner Jennifer Morrison from the Vermont Department of Public Safety. We've shared information about what's going on. It's not just happening in Bennington, it's happening all over the state of Vermont. I've had some opportunities to speak with Senator Sears, and this is not a political endorsement, I do enjoy working with Senator Sears, because he gets things done. And, you know, I have had an opportunity to speak with Senator Sears and others, and we're trying to come up with some legislation that we can introduce in the upcoming session that revolves around firearm violence, and also around juveniles and being able to hold juveniles. And the reason for that is because we are seeing an influx of youth, anywhere from the age of 15 to 19, involved in some of these activities where firearms are being used and narcotics are being sold here in Bennington. There's a lot of reasons for that, I'm not going to get into all the details, but the bottom line is, is that we need to be able to get this situation under control, and Senator Sears has been responsive, as well as some other legislators, and I did get an email from him, in fact, today, indicating that we are putting some drafts together. So, so we're working on it. So that's really that, I want to get through some other things, and then at the end, I'm more than happy to answer any questions, and Cam, if I miss anything, let me know. So where are we at staffing-wise? That's been a question, some people have sent emails, some people have called. You know, we were struggling for a little while in our communication center with dispatchers. I'm pleased to say that we have interviewed people, we have put out offers of hire, conducted background checks, and we have people training at the Police Department. We welcomed Susan Galena, a longtime employee from the Southwest Vermont Health Center, and Cameron Turner, both have come on board with the Bennington Police Department full-time. And we also have hired Savannah Robson, part-time. Savannah is a local young lady who has served her country overseas, recently back from deployment, and is learning to be a dispatcher, communication specialist at the Bennington Police Department. So right now, all three of them are doing very well, and we actually filled all of our slots by offering a part-time position today, and have a signed agreement with another soon-to-be employee. So our communication center is staffed. I know that at times, people call, it's busy, you feel that the dispatcher is being short with you on the phone, that's not the case, it's just when the phones ring and you got to get to the next one. We are in a situation, Stu was great, came in today, we sat down, and we discussed our communications staff, and, you know, we're handling a huge call volume right now between the Bennington Police Department, specifically the Bennington Police Department and the Bennington Rescue Squad. You know, we're upwards between the Bennington Police Department, the Bennington Rescue Squad, Pownau Rescue, Pownau Fire, North Bennington, Bennington, and Bennington World Fire Departments. We've dispatched almost 16,000 calls for service this year, and we're only in October. So we have October, November, December to go, so think about that. You know, three-quarters of the year has gone by, and, you know, almost 16,000 calls between all the agencies. It's a lot, and it's a lot of work. It's not just as simple as answering the phone and, you know, sending the fire department. They have to log everything, they have to keep control of everything, and that doesn't include all of the people that are calling and asking questions about different things like, you know, and they expect the Police Department to know the answer to all of these things, because after hours, who do they call? They call the police, because everyone else has gotten home for the day, right? So, so anyway, with that being said, where are we at with the Patrol Division, the officers in uniform? So right now, our staffing levels, we are down eight police officers, we were down six, but we lost two officers, one to the Bennington School District, and the other went to the MAU School District. So that's, that's really where we're at there. You know, there's, there's not a lot of light at the end of the tunnel as far as hiring law enforcement officers, it's a challenge every day, law enforcement is criticized nationwide, and, you know, we don't have Southern Vermont College here anymore. We used to recruit out of Southern Vermont College, we've had some excellent employees come out of Southern Vermont College, including myself. Wait, not the excellent employee part, but the part about recruiting out of Southern Vermont College, you know, I apologize for that, that was not a slip, that was, yeah, it was a slip. But the bottom line is, is that, you know, we don't have Southern Vermont College to recruit from anymore, and that hurts us a little bit, because we, again, we've had some excellent people come from there. So what are we doing about that? Well, in working with our communications person, Jonah, we have made a new relationship at Castleton University. That really is our next closest university here in Vermont that we, that we're going to attempt to recruit from. In fact, tomorrow morning, we're taking a person who is newly graduated from the Police Academy, and Lieutenant Grandy and I, and we're actually going to head up to Castleton and meet with some students there. And we're hoping that we get some, some positive feedback from Castleton, and we're going to promote the town of Bennington and the Bennington Police Department, and see where we go from there. And we're hoping that this is the start of a long-term relationship with, with Castleton, and that we can visit there on a regular basis. So we are really looking forward to that visit tomorrow. And again, Jonah really helped us with making the contacts there. So, and in fact, the younger officer, younger compared to Cam and I, the younger officer that we're taking actually is a graduate from Castleton, so it'll be like a little homecoming for him, he's actually really excited about it. So, another positive note, we, not, not a well-known fact, so I will share it with everyone here and at home, the Select Board most all are aware, we did apply for and receive a large grant through Vermont Crime Victim Services, and we are fortunate that we will be working with a human trafficking case manager at the Bennington Police Department. She is, started today, in fact, started her training today with the Human Trafficking Case Manager out of the South Burlington Police Department. She'll be working alongside our detectives, members of the Patrol Division, she'll be assigned here in Bennington. We will share her with other agencies that require assistance. And, you know, the human trafficking piece is scary in the sense that it's not just people in massage parlors, or it's not just people that come here and think that they're coming to a job that really does not exist, and they're forced to do something else. It really does revolve around the drug trade and what's happening with that. And we're hoping that with our Human Trafficking Case Manager, we'll be able to get people involved in programs and get them services that they need, so that they can move on with their lives and really be productive and move beyond the issues that they currently have. We're excited about this. I don't want to get into too many details until we know that it's 100% in place and working. Again, our new person started today, and we're glad to have this person on board. She does have a degree in psychology and criminal justice, and we're very thankful to our partners at Homeland Security Investigations for steering us in the right direction on this grant and being able to get assistance there. Do you want to add anything on that?
That the chief, with the assistance of the case manager from South Burlington, has already identified several trainings to get this person up to speed. Some of those trainings are going to be taken, are taking place outside of the state of Vermont, and this person will work closely with case managers from all over the country and learning what these case managers are seeing across the country, which we think is very beneficial.
Most recently, last week, there was a Domestic Violence Task Force meeting. Cam and I had the conflict out of that, but we did read the minutes, and staff from Southwest Vermont Healthcare did report an increase in cases involving human trafficking that they're seeing in the emergency department. So this comes at the right time for us, and I think working with the Human Trafficking Case Manager and my staff, we can help improve people's lives. So that's really what we're hoping for. On a couple more things that I think is important, you know, we are continuing to work with the Turning Point Opioid Response Team, and they're coming in to meet with our supervisors on Wednesday. As most of you know, they've moved to a new location, there's going to be a new contact number for our dispatchers to call, and again, they're going to come in and do a presentation on Wednesday morning. We're also going up to Southwest Vermont Health Center with all of our supervisors on Wednesday morning after this presentation to learn a little bit more about what's going on at the hospital and the renovations, so that my staff is on task with the changes that they're, that they're making there. We had a great visit over at the Senior Center last week. We were, I love going to the Senior Center, the seniors actually love the police, and it's really fun to sit and talk with them and hear what they have to say. They really have some of the same complaints as everybody else in Bennington, loud mufflers and speeding on their streets and barking dogs, and, but it really is fun to visit with them, and we enjoy that. And I did not get Orange Juice this time, but I made Carrie aware of that. We are, we'd like to just briefly talk about CPARB. We feel like we are making great strides with CPARB, the Community Policing Advisory Review Board. We have spent nine hours so far, working with them and getting them to understand the workings of the Police Department. They're a great group, we're actually excited, they have a lot of great questions, and it's actually fun to talk about all of the things that the Police Department does, good and bad, with this group. So they're also working on their ride-along programs, some of them became educated very quickly on some of the things that we do at the Bennington Police Department. Police Department, and they're getting to see how busy the communication center is. You know, a lot of them have enjoyed their time in communications, a little bit boring because they're not allowed to push the buttons and answer the phone and things like that, but they get to see how busy our communication staff really is. So, that's working well. Listen, we're doing some great things. We're super excited. We're on board. We just spent a lot of money buying Halloween treats, and we're on board and set up to participate in four trunk-or-treat events. We're kinda maxed out at that. Candy's expensive this year, or treats. I'm not supposed to say candy. Treats are expensive this year. But we are working with our partners up at Baton Hill Valley, and we will not only be handing out treats, but we're actually gonna practice good oral hygiene at our trunk-or-treat events, and we're actually gonna have toothpaste and dental floss and toothbrushes that we're gonna hand out as well, because we wanna make sure that we keep everybody happy. And I know the kids look at us funny when we hand them toothbrushes at our Copsicle events. In fact, we've gone through a slew of toothbrushes over the last two years, and we're fresh out. So, we had to call Baton Hill Valley today, and we're on board with handing out some of that stuff, too. And I just think it's the right thing to do. We also have some other things. If kids don't like candy, we'll have some other things there as well. So, we do wanna promote good oral hygiene, so that's why we're doing that. The National Drug Takeback Day is October 29th, so if you have unused or unwanted prescription medication, please, 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 come down to the police department with that. We have two drop boxes set up. All you have to do is push the button, tell the dispatcher that you're there to drop off unwanted meds. They'll let you in, and you can drop that and head right out the door. We're also working with the United Counseling Service on their 5K Road Race, and, you know, we have another event coming up where we, this week on Friday, the police department will be defending last year's win. This will be the Second Annual Justice League Kickball Tournament. We can actually play kickball. We're pretty good at it, and we wanna make sure that we maintain the trophy at the police department. If not, I'm not really a good sport. So, I hope that we do maintain that. So, that's what's going on. And then, lastly, there's some other things going on that I wanna make you aware of. Starting on October 16th, which is Sunday through December 3rd, you're gonna see a change in appearance. I'm really not that good at this. Cam's pretty good. Others are pretty good. I cannot grow a beard to save my life. We're gonna put the policy off for a month and a half, and we're gonna see if we can raise some funds for the cancer center expansion up at Southwest Vermont Health Center. So, you're gonna see officers donning this patch on the front of their external carrier. It is pink and blue. They'll start wearing these on the 16th, and again, run right through December 3rd. The male employees will be allowed to have facial hair only until December 3rd, and then it costs them money. They have to pay $25 if they choose to have facial hair, and all that money will go up to the cancer center. So, the female employees will have the opportunity to wear cancer awareness headbands, and that was one of their first questions, "Well, what do we get?" And, well, that's what you get, and I've already purchased the headbands. I have them. And so, you know, with that being said, you know, we have a lot going on at the police department. We're doing our best to support the community. We know that the community supports the police department. That's been very evident, and we appreciate all of the information that comes into the police department. We act on it, whether it comes in through our website, or it, people call our detectives or call a member of the Patrol Division, keep the information coming, 'cause we're working hard to keep this community safe, and we can't do it without the members providing us with information and being an active partner in our community. So, thank you for that. Questions?
Thank you. You covered a lot of ground, really quickly.
I know. Did I do okay?
And Cam didn't get to speak.
He actually got to speak.
He did get to speak. Yeah. So, questions from the board? Any questions from the board? Yes?
I have a ton, but...
Okay. Is this it? Yes, no?
All right, Jeanne, you're up.
All right. Not that many, but... So, the first thing was, it's really sad to hear that the drug trafficking is involving kids as young as 15. That's really sad, and I knew that. I guess I'm wondering, and you might not know the answer to this, it may be the court system that would know better, but is, I mean, a 15-year-old who's involved in this is clearly going down a really bad path. Could them being able to be held longer and the changes that you're seeking actually end up benefiting them in the end to get them out of what they've gotten themselves into? Do you have any sense of what the long-term trajectory of a kid would be that is actually in more trouble than they probably are now or could be in more trouble?
It's a difficult question, depending on, you know, where they're from. I mean, we're seeing an influx of trouble coming from Massachusetts and New York, and I think that putting, sometimes putting kids in the criminal justice system is hard, but when they're committing some of the crimes that they're actually committing here with full knowledge, you know, we have to hold them and attempt to put them in program, whether it's, in programming, whether it's here, or we get them back to their home state and get them in programming there. I think that would be a key to the success of getting these kids out and get them to understand what they're getting involved in. I mean, when you're 15 years old and you're carrying a backpack that has 800 bags of fentanyl and has a Glock handgun with a stick magazine in it, you're carrying that because the person that is 22-years-old doesn't wanna get caught with that, because they know that they can be held like that.
Right.
And that's part of the problem that we're seeing, and again, that's why working with Senator Sears on some of this new legislation is very important. Listen, you know, we don't wanna see kids go to jail, but they're acting with knowledge. They know what they're getting as a result of peddling fentanyl here or peddling heroin here. You know, there's a lot of things that have happened in Bennington County, not just Bennington, but in Bennington County over the last year and a half that are frightening to people and scary, and without hesitation, people are pulling the trigger and shooting real bullets. And, you know, I think it's important. We had a couple of still photos in the banner, looking for some help, trying to identify some people, and I think it's important that these kids be apprehended and be charged and be held, and that they be placed in programming so that we can help them get their lives straightened around and understand what they're doing. They're going down the wrong path.
Right.
And we've already seen the path that people have gone down, and, but I cannot comment really any further while the case remains active and open. So, we have to be careful with that, but at the same time, people need to understand the seriousness and the significance of what they're doing.
Yeah. Okay. That's kinda what I was expecting. Let's see. Is the disruption, the constant disruption of the drug trafficking, is that, is the ultimate goal is to disrupt that so much that they'll just leave?
The ultimate goal is to disrupt the actions of these people and have them not return to our community. This is a great community. We don't want them here.
Right.
We don't want them peddling their stuff here. The problem that we have, it goes full circle, is there's a demand, and when there's a demand, there's gonna be a supply. So, that's why it's so important that we work on this hub-and-spoat program, that we get people in the treatment or get people in treatment that they need, so that there's not the demand, so that they stop coming here and peddling. This is not, this is not just Bennington. I mean, there are issues in Ponal, there are issues in Arlington, there are issues in Manchester. It's everywhere. It's all over the state, and, you know, we really have to clamp down and put our foot down and be aggressive. I mean, we have probably one of the best state's attorneys in this entire state actively prosecuting these cases, and now we have our federal partners helping us as well. But there needs to be massive disruption, and we need to get the people that are responsible for this. That's why having our federal partners is so important, so we can take information from Vermont and bring it down to Massachusetts, or bring it down to New York, down in the city by Yonkers, and work with authorities there to disrupt this cycle.
Cool. I'll only ask one more. I have two more, but I'll only ask one. You know, with people, the nursing profession and teachers are retiring, and, you know, everyone's in need of people in the classroom and nurses in hospitals, and I, it seems like those two professions have become creative and offered jobs to people that had retired, and people are coming out of retirement to fill some of these positions. I didn't know if there was such an option for police officers, maybe newly retired police officers who may be willing to come back part-time. I have no idea how that works in your profession, but I didn't know if it was an option that was being entertained.
So, that option is being entertained. You know, Governor Phil Scott recently announced that he'd like to see some officers come out of retirement. He was looking for 100 police officers in Vermont to come out of retirement. I can tell you that police officers go into retirement for obvious reasons, and I think it's gonna be a challenge. We have placed calls to see if we can bring back some of our retired people, and, you know, people that have retired just are not interested in getting body slammed to the ground, being spit on. You know, I mean, I looked most recently at the officer down, the school resource officer down in Florida, who was trying to break up a fight and got grabbed by the neck and then picked up and body slammed to the ground, and the person started punching the officer. You know, that's really not what this job is about. You know, you get involved in policing, and it sounds tacky, but you wanna help people. You wanna go on medical calls, you wanna go on fire calls, you wanna do what's right by the community. You wanna be involved in the community and play sports with the kids and do different things like that. And right now, in this country, you know, law enforcement is not well-respected, and, you know, I think it's a challenge to bring people out of retirement. There's all sorts of rules. Mr. Hurd and I have had this conversation. I recently asked him what the rules would be with the Vermont Municipal Employee Retirement System about bringing people out of retirement, because if you come out of retirement and you work so many hours, I actually sat down with Melissa Currier, our finance director, so I could better understand that, because if you work too many hours, your retirement stops and you're back in the system, and now the town's gotta provide you with healthcare. And, I mean, it's a cycle, right? So, what we need to do is we need to get out to these colleges and universities, this is my opinion as a police chief. We need to get out to these colleges and universities, and we need to, we need to get ahold of these kids early and tell them not to go to TSA and all of these easy jobs. They need to get involved in jobs that are a little bit tougher, where we can actually get out on the street and help people. I really do believe that. I'm all about using retired people in certain positions, but then again, it's very difficult to find people that are retired. I've talked to plenty of retired people, and it's, you know, no way, no how.
No, thank you.
And it's not, and it's not because, I mean, listen, I'm thinking about Lloyd Dean and Larry Cole, Dave Dutcher, all people that I've recently called, just to see, "Hey, what's going on?" And, yeah, it doesn't work. Dave Dutcher said no before I even got the words out. So, you know, and I get it. Listen, you know, I get it. I mean, we're trying to help Old Bennington right now. As you all know, Andy Corey decided to end his position up in Old Bennington, and, you know, I'd love to try to help Old Bennington, but it's a struggle right now to fill the eight full-time positions that I have, never mind find somebody for up there. But we are working on it, because we do adore the people in Old Bennington. So, it's a challenge. I love your question, but I guess I should just say, "No."
That's kinda what I thought you were gonna say.
Yeah, I know. You said that with the last question, too.
Yeah.
It is a good thought, but...
Think outside the box sometimes. Works.
Bruce? Yeah. I wanted, I don't want us to talk a little bit more about the case manager, the new case manager.
Sure.
Human trafficking. And, you know, obviously, you already know that I'm four-square in favor of that position and that person. What I'm interested in is what kind of information, and how soon can you give that information to the people of the town? Because this is a new kind of position at the police department. We've had victims advocate at the state's attorney's office, but this is a slightly new kind of way of going things, and I think it's a really important move. And I'm wondering, what plans do you have to communicate to the citizens of Bennington what this person will do?
Sure.
Maybe who this, I don't know whether you can say eventually who this person is, what skills they bring to this job, et cetera.
Sure. So, let's do the easy part. So, a victims advocate in this community is essential for some of the crimes that we're actually seeing. The victims advocates at the state's attorney's office, we love them. They work hard to get people assistance after the fact, mostly, right? Or during the prosecution of a case, they're there to support people if they're victims and they have to testify. This case manager position, as a human trafficking case manager, is designed so that this person, and her name is Zoe Nixon, started at Southern Vermont College, finished her degree at Southern New Hampshire University, is a local individual, lives close by here in Bennington, and double-major criminal justice and psychology, has case manager experience over in New York. And so, we have her here now. She worked with us for a while as a dispatcher, and she has now transitioned into this role. So, her role is going to be to really work side-by-side with law enforcement. You may see her out on an occasional drug raid, so that we can identify victims right then and there, pull them aside and start getting them services immediately. This isn't the police do the paperwork, we send the paperwork to the state's attorney's office, and the victims advocate reaches out. Boom, they're on scene, they're helping out. Might get a phone call at 2:00 in the morning, "Hey, Zoe, we need you to come to the office. We have somebody that we need you to work with." Boom, 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 and she starts working with them. So, this is an immediate assistance. This isn't six weeks down the road when the case goes to court and things like that. That's what we find most appealing about this. There will be money available through the grant to help victims get services that they need and programming that they need, and that's important to us as well. I think that that really is the big difference between the advocates at the state's attorney's office and the advocate that we're gonna have in our office available to us, you know, after hours, you know, weekends, you know, if she's not already working a weekend. So, you know, that's really the difference, and we're excited about that, to have somebody that we can turn a victim over to, so that they can get the assistance that they need.
I, too, am excited about this model, and I'm hopeful that it will be very successful.
We understand that the money will be available to us for a minimum of two years, and the staff up at Vermont Crime Victim Services has been wonderful to deal with. They really have, very responsive, you know, to our questions. It's a lot of work on our part, too, 'cause we have to manage all of this, and, but I think it's well worth it, it's well worth the time that we're gonna be putting into it, if we can help people in need, so...
Yeah. That's helpful. I hope it's more clear for folks in the community.
And I would love, Jeanne, at some point, once Zoe gets a little more training, I mean, I mean, she was, boom, right out of the gate today, online, doing training, as Cam mentioned earlier. You know, there's training in Texas, there's training in Florida, the grant's gonna pay for all that. I mean, we have to put the money out, but then we get it back. So, if you see that come across a warrant, I mean, a lot of that will be, all of it will be reimbursable. So, you know, the bottom line is, is we get her all up to speed and trained, and I think, you know, that she's gonna be fantastic, and, you know, Stu's been very supportive about this position, and especially if it, you know, if it can help the police department and it can help the police department get people services that they need. So, you know, we're excited, and I'm excited for people that need the services.
That would be super. I'm wondering if she, if it's appropriate, maybe she can come to the...
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was my thing. So, maybe, maybe, you know, maybe in January, let's get her up to speed on some things.
Sure.
There's training this month, and then there's training in November, and she is just a very, very sweet young lady who is full of energy, and, you know, I think you'll enjoy speaking with her, and maybe we can get her on the agenda, and she can come in and introduce herself and get the word out.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, I think we're all very impressed with just the level of proactiveness that the police department and you two in leadership have really shown, which is...
Thank you.
Just incredible. When asked if there are...
Want to ask if there are questions from the audience? Yes, okay. One and then two. Come on up, please ask your question.
Clark has.
Oh, and Clark, and three, okay.
I've got actually two. Sam, we're students from Bennington, Vermont. Since we're in the Halloween situation, I'm quite sure you've heard of fentanyl that looks like candy. Don't think it's not going to happen here in Bennington with the cross-traffic of anywhere that could happen. It's great that you're communicating. Are you communicating with Springfield? I read up a lot of issues down in Springfield of what's going on and I try to keep abreast of, because the pipeline does come up from Springfield. I mean, recently, people coming up here to kidnap people because of their not paying their, uh, drug bills. I mean, you, the department responded very well in that situation along with the dispatchers.
Thanks. So, I believe the question is about the, the fentanyl that looks like Spree or Sweet Tarts. We have been tracking that. In fact, Cam and I just talked about it on Thursday, last Thursday. We believe that that's made it from the southern border as close as Connecticut. We have not seen any Sweet Tart-looking fentanyl at this point and we, we agree, it's a matter of time before it arrives here and I think parents just need to be cognizant. I mean, it, it's just not come in a, in a Sweet Tart wrapper. It's coming in, in little cellophane bags and, you know, so, I mean, I know, I know it's the same old, same old, but I'm going to say, I mean, we need to look at the candy that our kids are getting and, you know, we need to, to make sure that everything looks like it, it came from the store, isn't proper packaging. And that doesn't mean that it can, you know, it won't slide by, but people need to take a, a real solid look at, at what's, what's in those bags. And, I mean, you know, we've been, I've been, I feel weird saying it because I've been teaching this for years and years and years, over 30, but, you know, I know a lot of people like to just come from Husick Falls and drop their kids up on East Street and Center Street and West Street or where there's, you know, you can get the most bang for your buck, you know, candy-wise or treat-wise. You know, your kids should really be trick-or-treating in neighborhoods that, that you know. And, and, and let's just do it that way. It's a lot easier just to go down to Hannaford or Price Chopper or Walmart or wherever you shop and buy a bag of candy for your kids or a bag of treats or, don't forget the toothbrushes. You know, the bottom line is, is that, you know, you, you need to be aware and spend time with your kids and, and know where they're going and not, don't just drop them off. So, next.
Okay. Ned, I think you were next.
Yeah. Ned Perkins, Bennington. Thank you, guys. You're doing a great job. I'm just wondering about your relationships with the schools. I know for a while, a couple of years back, we had officers in the schools on a regular basis. I thought it was terrific. You get to know the kids, the kids get to know you. A lot of these kids don't have positive role models in their lives. I just thought it was a great program. Is that something that's still going on or is that?
So, don't run away. So, we, we are still doing our best to get officers into the schools. Some of the trunk-or-treat events are, are happening at schools, so we get to interact with the kids that way. We're still reading in schools and, and on occasion, Southwest Tech and the high school, for example, they ask for officers and we do have officers there a couple of times a week, not every day, because I just don't have the staffing for that and they do need time off. So, so we are still participating in, in different school activities and, and, and we love that. So, so the short answer is yes, just not as frequent. Okay? And we understand, listen, prior to the school year starting, I got calls from parents asking if we were going to have an officer, you know, at the middle school and, because I know everybody wants one there, I, I just, I just don't have it. I mean, I need to make sure that we're providing 24/7 coverage in the town of Bennington. It doesn't mean that we can't put an officer up at the school periodically, but, but to put officers in the school all, you know, five days a week is just not happening. Okay? Thanks.
Just one other quick
Absolutely.
Just as far as freeing up officers, how much are you using technology like surveillance cameras? Do you have surveillance cameras in some of the high-crime areas like, you know, you said, Pleasant Street or something? And what about like, there's, you know, what is it? Pittsfield has a shot locator. So, after, is that something that's on your
Yeah, so we're not, in Bennington, we're not using shot locator. We haven't, you know, up until this year, there was really, there really hasn't been a need for that and we're hoping that we're going to be able to curb this violence and not police shot locator in Bennington. You know, as far as surveillance goes, you know, we, we are, you know, one of the, one of the oddest things is, is with technology is we love ring doorbells. I have to tell you, the ring doorbells capture so much information. The only thing that we do find is that people don't actually know how to use their ring doorbell. It's all well and good to have it, it's all well and good to have the video and, and sometimes we have to teach people how we can share that video and, and take the video. So, we are using technology as, as best that we can and, and again, working with our federal partners, we have access to a lot of technology that we're currently using, so, and it's working out for us.
So, so I know, like, we've used the Ring camera and have gotten no trespass orders against some people who've been trespassing and I think this has been helpful in getting them the help that they need.
Right.
And I'm wondering if we can get more people to do that and I'm wondering if the town can issue no trespass orders to, you know, if somebody is shooting up in the bathroom at Merchants Park, can they be issued a, a no trespass order so that this doesn't happen on a regular basis?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I mean, I don't want to speak for Stuart, but I'm sure that if people are, are committing criminal activity at Merchants Park or in other areas, town property, Willow Park or what have you, you know, that, that, you know, I have signed trespass notices on behalf of the town as the police chief to prevent people from returning to property when they're, they're committing criminal acts. So, that, that is, that is possible. I just want to touch on the ring doorbell really quickly again. You know, sometimes we, we meet with people and they, they promise that they're going to get information. Every single Bennington police officer should have business cards with an email address and all we're asking is that people do follow-up with us and not forget to send us information that they, that they claim that they're going to send us. That, that's important to our investigations so that we're not, we're not leaving a piece out, so. And I'm not saying, you know, everybody run down to Home Depot and just get a ring doorbell, but, you know, it, it is helpful, especially when you have things going on in your neighborhood because the ring doorbells do capture a lot and, and people don't even, people don't even realize that others have ring doorbells. You know, we, we've seen it plenty of times where law enforcement has gone to a house and, and, you know, you don't even realize it's a ring doorbell and you, you push it and next thing you know, people are talking to you. And it is pretty neat, but the bottom line is, is that's one way that we can use technology to our benefit, so. Yeah, you're welcome, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you. Clark?
Good evening, Chief and company. Couple of things, you know, I consistently hear the message of your partners from other agencies and I think in general, the public, everyone wants to be on the winning side, so to speak. And although we've had a lot of bad things, we're not hearing about successes or progress. And I think the public in town would benefit from whether it be the state's attorney, the U.S. Attorney's Office, the different federal alphabet agencies that are helping you with your, your, your law enforcement issues, just like you, come here and talk to us and say, hey, we have these interdiction successes or we have these legislative judicial obstructions or bumps in the road. One thing I hear in talking to people and even as a candidate's meeting up in Manchester, there's a consistent message about people not feeling that the system is in fact working or responsive to their concerns. You know, although I'm fairly new to Bennington here, a few, if somebody told me that, by the way, they, they had 17 gun events in Bennington, I would say, you're, you're BSing me. That can't be. That's not the bucolic, beautiful little valley, New England town that my wife and I retired to. So, the fact is this negativity is being publicized. We need to hear positive steps being taken to address that. And I have no doubt in my mind that you and your officers and of course the town board want nothing more than this problem gone, never to return. But I really think the people of this community would benefit from seeing and hearing positive information from the people charged with addressing this problem. And it's great that you and Lieutenant are here, but it's kind of parallel with the voting, you know? People sit around yak 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 yak, but what do we, what do we, what's the result? What's going on? So, I would wonder if, you know, next time you guys come, any chance you could get some of your state and federal partners and actually come here and tell the people of Bennington, we're here for you, we're here to make sure this problem is addressed and does not return or expand. But that's just
Okay. So, I'll, I'll address that. Thank you, Clark. I think that, you know, it's true. I mean, we, we, you see the, the splash where we arrest people. We don't always find out the outcome unless the banner has a reporter down at the court when a case is resolved. I think you see the splash when someone gets arrested. It takes way too long, Clark, really, and for everyone else, it takes way too long for the, the cases to get prosecuted and it's not a dig at anybody, it's just, it's how the system is and it's very, very frustrating. You know, so, some of these cases go out two years plus and it need not be like that. The U.S. Attorney's Office has a great program where they send out press releases on a regular basis. It's very rare that you see any of that printed, you know, because it's like, we're off to the next. And this isn't a dig at any media outlet or anything, it's just like they want to go with current events. This happened two years ago, we don't want to hear about this. And, and, and I, I think that's a shame because people do want to know what the outcome is. Sometimes we don't always like the outcome and I think that's, that's one of the reasons why media outlets don't always put that out there. That's just me talking, you know, personally and professionally about that. But, you know, most recently, I, I left this out with the alphabet soup that you were talking about, most recently, the FBI out of Albany called and, last week, and they want an opportunity for Lieutenant Randy and I to come down to the Albany office and see what they can do to help us out here in Bennington. And that, that call came right around the same time I got the call from Commissioner Morrison. We have caught the governor's eye, Clark, you know, we've caught the governor's eye in all the positive things that the police department is doing down here and all the efforts that are being made. I'm getting calls from colleagues to, to find out how we're being successful here. And when I say successful, that means arrests and things like that. Where, where we really need to be successful is to make the activity stop and that's the whole criminal enterprise disruption that we were talking about earlier. So, your point is very well taken and, you know, we were really hoping that, I don't really want to let the cat out of the bag, but I want you to understand what we're trying to do. You know, we're, we're in late spring of 2023, we've been talking with Jeannie Jenkins and, and other select board members about possibly creating a citizen police academy here in Bennington, twofold. You know, you would have your bachelor's level program and then you would have your master's level program. Now, your certificate would be signed by Paul Dussas, so it doesn't mean anything really, it's not like you're going to go get a job with it, but the bottom line is, is in that master's level program, we would really like to bring in our federal partners and have them, you know, during this program, explain what their role is here in Bennington. And I don't know if that really answers your question, but that's something that we are working on for late spring of 2023 and, and seeing if we can educate, because a lot of people have no idea what Homeland Security does, they have no idea what the FBI does except for what you see on TV and, and that, that's not real. You know, we don't solve criminal cases in, in less than an hour and people get prosecuted and go to jail in less than an hour. It just doesn't happen. And so I, I think that's, that's one of the things, that the select board has been wonderful about trying to figure out ways and help the police department, have the community understand all of the efforts that we're making and that's something that we came up with so that people would understand what we're actually doing and who we're working with. And it, and it might be a, a visit from the hospital, it might be, you know, an hour visit from United Counseling Service because we have local alphabets that help us out as well and that's going to be my new thing, thanks for that, the alphabet. So, I, I think that we have a lot of local people that are helping, but we do have people at the federal level that are, are trying to help us out, too, and I think it's much needed.
I think it's very important that these other entities have face time with the community. You know, we hear about the state's attorney, about, you know, the average person, that means not, so it was, oh, I saw Joe Blow on the T V and he said, here's what we're doing. That carried a little weight, you know, a little one-line word in there. And I, I think in terms of the community of Albany, everybody wants to be on the main team. During, not over, whose jersey are you wearing? We have to get to the point where the community wants to put on jerseys from your team. And, you know, we kind of, I think it's tough, I'd say, hey, these problems we talk about are problems with the community and the only way to get it solved is with the community. And, you know, we kind of, we're handling both, so that's, that's the reason that we really appreciated some face time. Somebody from state attorney about to show up and say, hey, these are the constraints that we must work with legislatively for whether it be budget area or whatever, remember that, giving advantage, I was going to say, there's the dome running the big trigger. And one of the things he addressed was, and he went looking at the doctor, how much money they just spent, how much resources they allocated or misallocated. And, you know, and that's all I just think people, this community in Vermont needs to know, language, language, tie-to-hat, what the state judicial system, the federal system is doing to this problem and at the same time, they need to be tasked to become part of the solution, too.
Agreed. Hundred percent.
Yeah. No, I think that's, I think that's very good suggestion and, and we can talk about that because I think that's, that's a shared responsibility
Agreed.
To make that happen.
Totally.
Yeah. No, thank you for that. One more, Sam. All right. Slipped my mind.
This is another issue we haven't talked about. I really have, hate to bring it up, but, call me old-school, but recreational marijuana, medical marijuana. Found out there's been a facility open up for four years on Depot Street. We've got one opening up in the next month on Main Street, along down the street with a place called Exotic Clouds that sells, sells bongs, paper shop, cigar, whatever, tobacco. Found also one, there's a permit out on North Side Drive, another marijuana dispensary, if you want to get the terminology right. They're coming down the pike, also one in Ponnell. How do you feel about this? This is another threat coming in.
I mean, it's not a secret that for years I was fighting the legalization of marijuana. When I was the president of the Chiefs Association, I testified in Mount Pelear. I, my personal feelings are not what's important. Fifty-one percent of Vermonters feel that marijuana should be legal and right now, our legislators have passed laws against federal law, allowing for the legalization of marijuana and marijuana to be sold here. And that, that's what we have to work with at this point. I don't, I don't create the laws, I am required to enforce the laws and, you know, sure, we all have fears about the sale of marijuana in this community. Every time we do a drug search warrant for heroin or fentanyl, there's marijuana present, right? Every time, you know, we, we have involvement with, with youth that have been smoking marijuana, we fear that they're later on in life, they're going to have an altered mental status, depends on what study you read or, or what have you. As far as the town of Bennington goes, you know, you know, there's, they have to follow the, the law, Sam. We have to follow the state guidelines on, on marijuana dispensaries. There has been a shop open on Depot Street, that's not a secret, it's, it's been there. And, and what we, what we all seem to have forgotten is that there are tons of dispensaries in Massachusetts, hundreds of dispensaries in Massachusetts. And that's where people from Bennington and Manchester and Arlington, that's where everybody's going, violating federal law by crossing the state line, going and buying marijuana and bringing it back into Vermont and then they sell it, right? So, you know, our, our fear is law enforcement is that, you know, we've been kind of tasked to stay away from the whole marijuana thing unless it's significant, but what's going to happen is we're going to have these dispensaries and then we're going to be asked to get back into the marijuana business. gonna be asked to get back into the marijuana business, uh, because we're gonna have to fight against the people that are selling marijuana, black market, um, and, um, because the state's not gonna be collecting the tax revenue that they expect. I think that eventually the whole thing will implode because of Massachusetts and New York and Vermont. Um, you know, everybody's gonna be fighting. It's, it's like gasoline taxes, right? So your gasoline tax in one state is lower than another state, so, you know, and, but yet again, it's still illegal to, to bring it over. And, um, you know, I, I think that we need to track this. Uh, as, as some people have said, the ship has sailed on this. The law is in effect. Um, and as of October 1st, once you have your permits in place, you can sell, uh, recreational marijuana. And, uh, that's something that we need to be aware of, that we need to deal with. And, um, and, and right now, those are the laws that we have, and that's, and that's what we have to enforce. Again, if you do your homework, um, on this, uh, you know, fifty-one percent, that's, that's the majority. Um, and, and that's why I, I think that the law went into effect, because more than half of Vermonters believe it should be legal, and, uh, my personal opinion does not matter, um, at this point. But, um, I, I, I think that we just need to do our best and, and see if we can steer the ship and keep it straight and, and prevent people from utilizing marijuana underage and keeping people safe. That's what we've been tasked to do for years, um, with alcohol. And that's where we're at with that.
So, Sam, I'm gonna stop you from getting into any more conversation on this, because I think question asked and answered, and I'm just looking at the time. Um, I think, you know, you guys can have a conversation later, and I appreciate your candid response.
That's all it is for medical marijuana. We don't care about the, it's just a tax basis, that's all. So I'm out of the board, just sorry.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Um, any other questions for the chief or lieutenant? Yes, please.
Robert. Evening, Robert Ebert, Bennington. It's not a question. Uh, I'm a member of the, uh, Citizens Police Advisory and Review Board. I just wanted to thank the chief and the lieutenant for all the training they've been, uh, giving us. We've had nine classroom hours of it, and they've been with us for every hour of that. They bring in other people from the department to talk about their specialties. Uh, we've had times when they've been on duty for 12 hours, when we get together to start our three hours of training. They were at, uh, our first training session. Um, so, uh, please don't respond, but, uh, just wanted to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? No? All right. Well, we wanna thank you. We wanna thank you for your candor. We wanna thank you for showing up, not only here, but for the community. Um, you, your officers, dispatchers, we really owe you a deep, you know, our deep gratitude.
Thank you. Um, I just want to add one more thing that I forgot about, uh, really quickly. Um, we really would, uh, like to improve our efforts in the community, um, and at some point, uh, probably around budget time, we're, we're gonna be talking about another dog, um, and, uh, and, and bringing another dog onboard at the Bennington Police Department. Um, uh, I would really like to see another lab, uh, for, uh, Labrador Retriever, for obvious reasons, and, um, although Rob Marowski and Gracie would differ with my opinion on that. Um, but I think, um, I, I would really look, be looking for your support and the support from the community, uh, to make that happen. And, uh, it's, it's about, it's about finding evidence. It's about finding narcotics. It's about finding people, uh, and it's also about comfort. Um, and that's where the lab is at. And, um, so I've just thrown that out to you, and, uh, at some point, um, maybe we can get permission from the board and permission from the manager to start a fundraising event for that. And, uh, and I just share that with you, because I think at this time, it's necessary for victims and it's necessary for police work. Um, so I'm just putting it in there, okay?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that was incredibly, uh, useful, and we learned a lot, as always. Uh, and so following that, we have another wonderful presentation. Um, Paul Danzerow is here to talk to us about the ADA Transition Plan, the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan.
Good evening. Uh, Paul Danzerow, Director of Facilities. I just wanted to provide an update on Town of Bennington, uh, American with Disabilities Act Plan. Uh, in 1995, the Town of Bennington had adopted, at that time, an ADA Transition Plan, because many of our facilities and programs were still in the midst of transit, transition over to become compliant. Uh, since that time, you know, all the recommendations and requirements that were identified in that original plan were either completed, or facilities that were identified no longer are used or used in the same ways, et cetera. In June of this year, uh, Town of Bennington, with the assistance of the Vermont Center for Independent Living, uh, conducted a self-audit of all facilities, or excuse me, self-audit of the majority of the public access facilities in, uh, the town operations. Uh, notes from that self-audit, as well as the ensuing, uh, VSL report, are included as Appendix A and Appendix B in entirety within the updated plan. Moving forward, uh, at the start of each fiscal year, my advice would be we will review this plan, make pen and note changes, see what has been updated, see what has maybe changed in conditions, incorporate that in, and if need be, could include it in within a budget cycle if it was something that required resources. And then every five years, formally, update the written plan, as well as, uh, re-adopt it. And that way, it will stay current with any of the change in facilities, uh, programs, operations, and/or technology that, uh, comes, comes along since, uh, you know, last looked at. Uh, you know, what was included in this package was labeled as the third draft. This has been staffed, uh, through, uh, the town, uh, departments that were affected, such as town clerk, HR, uh, et cetera. The, uh, it was also staffed through the Vermont Center for Independent Living, just for their review and inputs, and of course, select board, uh, and town managers' inputs, et cetera. Uh, within it, you know, it's, uh, outlined out, you know, changes were made, uh, just some subtle change within definitions, the election section, meetings, employment, programs and activities, uh, the grievance prog, excuse me, grievance procedures, and then facility and upgrade improvements. Uh, so, uh, subject to any further input, comments, or changes to the plan, uh, I would leave it with the board members, uh, to, to then move forward. If there is something, changes, I could make those and put those in, and then move forward to adopt it. Subject to questions.
So you'd be looking for a motion from us tonight, if that's appropriate, to the board? Yes. Okay. So, um, any, any questions for Paul? Bruce had his hand up first.
I know, I noticed.
Go, that was fast, go.
Paul, you, you mentioned, uh, one of my, uh, questions, which is, um, that it is your intention to review this yearly, but, but do a complete re-review, uh, every five years. Where in the plan does it actually say that?
I believe it's.
Because I was looking for that, and, and I'm sure it's there. I thought I had read it, but I couldn't find it when you were mentioning it.
Sorry.
Here's, here's what I would suggest.
Well, in the purpose statement, in the, uh, third paragraph of the purpose statement, uh, is where I dress up to review annually, then update it every five years to.
Yeah. Okay, that's where I did read it. Okay, here's what I would suggest, however. Since that is buried in text, um, and as much as I think we're all, we all have great intentions to do what it is we want to do with documents that are this important, uh, I, it does say adopted at the top, and it would be the date that it's adopted. I would also encourage, um, some place as conspicuous to say due for review on five years from the date of adoption. I'm just, partly because we all know, you're not gonna be here, um, forever. I'm, I'm assuming.
Fair enough.
In 25 years.
Fair enough.
You might retire.
Well, you know, I, you know, I thought you were going to be at, uh, MAU for a long time, too. So, uh, I, it's just that human beings change, and I just think it's really important for us to, to not let 27 years go by, uh, till the next one. And I know that's your intention, and I know that that's, I knew it was in there somewhere, um, but I couldn't find it quickly enough. And even at the bottom of that page, just in bold type, to be reviewed and re-adopted, and put the date on it, so that you know, and we all know, and your successor knows. And again, and, and I know that would mean that five years from now, somebody's gonna have to change that date again. That's okay. I can live with that. That'll be at least one place. That's my suggestion.
All right. So, so Bruce, so, um, so at the bottom, I mean, it is on the, it is on page one.
It is on page one, but it's buried in text.
But if we have a sentence that says to be reviewed and re-adopted, uh, in five...
I would say, uh, October 2027.
You could put several.
You could. You could actually do that. I think it's, whatever makes it very explicit. I, I agree that it was there. I, I knew that it was there, because I remember reading it. I just hadn't highlighted it. Um, and I just think it's, it's always helpful. As a person who's worked with policy for, seems like forever, it's easy to let these things go.
Can do that.
But otherwise, um, I was very pleased with what I saw.
Yeah, that's really well done.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. This is, you did this so quickly and so efficiently. I, it's really wonderful work that you did on this. Um, I might be wrong. I'm often wrong. Um, are people allowed, Stu, you're probably the one I'm looking to answer this question. If someone needs, um, accommodations for, let's say, any meeting, they're allowed to request that. Is that not true?
Through Paul.
Through Paul.
And it's actually on the note, on all agenda notices on the town.
So is that in here as well?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
I have, I see where it says about town meeting, but I, I also thought I read it, but can't find where it's, it, the same language or something similar is.
It's on page five, and actually, it's line two, and it probably should read, "The Town of Bennington and its boards and commissions shall strive to meet."
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, uh, agendas and minutes are kept. Agendas for town select boards and board and commissions include the following statement for those seeking accommodations. So then it has that information. It's, um, it's nice.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it is in there.
Great. Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's important. Yes, Sarah?
I think this is an excellent document. Um, I think, I guess Bruce would like some revisions, whether revisions. Bruce suggested I'd like to make a motion to, um, to, to suggest to, uh, sorry.
Yeah, let's just fold that into our final.
Yep. So I'd like to make a motion to, to adopt this.
Yeah, okay. Uh, well, let's, let's ask, let's get.
With Bruce's suggestion, with Bruce's addition.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
We could have that now. Question?
I, I don't have a question so much as, I, I was part of the group that, that did the walk-around with you, and I just think we really need to commend the folks at VCIL for coming down to help us with that, because they didn't have to.
That's correct.
Um, and there were also some, some, at least one citizen, two citizens, that, that joined in the walk, um, as well, and their work needs to be commended as well. Um, and I think it's a great example of when an advocacy, advocacy agency and the town can actually work together to make improvements, um, that benefit the community as a whole. And, uh, so I just, I want to thank them for their help on this, and you, I mean, this, you, you went through the checklist they sent you, and you addressed every single issue, as far as I can see. And I think, uh, we owe you a good deal of thanks for that. So thank you.
And, and Tom, I think, um, when you and I met with VCIL, they originally suggested that this plan be re-examined, and, and so the, really, the community brought this to us. And, yeah, I totally agree with you that this was, Paul, you took it on, and you took, and you did just an amazing job, you and your staff. Gary, any, anything? Jim? Okay, Jim? Anyone from the community have any questions, comments on the ADA plan? Yes, please. Sam?
One thing I'm glad to see, especially with our local cable access on Cat TV, what happened at the primaries, with our ADA voting. Now, many people know that. If they're hard of hearing, um, can't physically be in a room with a lot of people, if you call ahead of time, our town clerks can be adaptable to you. A lot of people don't know that, and a lot of people don't want to inquire. Please, if that's the reason why you don't want to vote, can't vote, don't let that hold you. Call the town offices, call the town clerks. They will accommodate you. Stop the fear.
Great. Thank you, Sam. All right. So Sarah, do you want to make the motion to adopt the plan with the?
I believe I did the first motion, yes.
Yeah, second.
Okay.
And, and can I second, and then just, I know this is technically out of order, but I just wanted to commend one particular item that I meant to say, and I didn't.
Any more discussion?
Thank you. Um, and that is the sound in this room and, and the suggestion. I don't, I don't know how to resolve it, but we even heard about it last, um, at the last meeting. And I know that it's an issue. Uh, I see heads in the back nodding. Apparently, it's much worse back there than it is here, up here. Um, at any rate, whatever it takes, if we're gonna meet in this room, what it takes to make it workable, so people can hear the discussion and the dialogue, I think, I, I commend you for working through that process. I don't know what the result, what the resolution will be, but thank you.
All right. Well, while we're on discussion, I just want to say, I am so happy that we're gonna get a push button on the door downstairs, and I can't wait to add that to this year's budget.
Yep.
So that, um, it improves access into the building. All right. Any more? Are we ready to vote? All right. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Thank you.
I just want to make one comment.
Oh, and one more time?
Yeah, this is, this is outside the vote. It's not in the document, but I just wanted the public to know mostly, um, that when we were on the walk and roll, we were, um, speaking about offering, um, people that own small businesses and shops the opportunity to have VCIL come down and help a shop owner make their, their, um, shop more accessible. And I, I don't know how we're gonna roll that out, but, um, you know, they can't change some things, but there may be things that they can do that they just haven't really thought of that would be an easy, an easy fix and make their, their property more accessible. So somehow, we'll roll that out and make that, uh, make people aware that that's available, and VCIL was very willing to help do that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good. All right. Well, thank you very much, Paul.
Uh, thank you all. Appreciate, and like I said, you give myself a lot of credit, but it's really the team behind me that's, makes all the hard work happen. So I really appreciate what they do in the, in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
All right. I'm not sure. I think, I think tonight has really covered implementing the town vision, yes?
In a big way.
Um, in a big way, yes. And so unless I see anything coming up, um, I think we'll move directly on to the manager's report.
Yeah, I, the chief took all my time, so I think we'll just, uh, just very quickly. Um, Casella is in town. They are beginning preparations for the Benmont Avenue Sewer Replacement Project. Uh, not a lot of activity in the street itself at this time, but they are in town and, and getting ready to proceed. Uh, for those of you who may have seen the efforts on Franklin Lane, uh, the town worked to, uh, remove, uh, two feet of material. Um, came upon gas lines that we weren't aware were there initially, um, although it was pretty obvious, because they, there are several buildings that have gas meters attached to them. Uh, but we worked very carefully around those, and I think now that a contractor is in place, uh, and doing some additional work there. And I'm looking at Dan.
Papers are going today.
There you go. Um, we had 2,200 test kits, COVID test kits, that we, uh, received from the Health Department when they were, uh, pushing them out to the communities. Um, they're all gone. Uh, they went very quickly. Uh, so we have, uh, are, are reaching out to the Health Department to see if there are additional kits available. If we receive them, we will once again place them in various municipal buildings, so they'll be available to people who need them, uh, and, uh, are looking for them. And, uh, we're just down to the last 11 properties that may go to tax sale at the end of And we're just down to the last 11 properties that may go to tax sale at the end of October. We have a couple that may come off the list. People are working very hard to find a way to either get a plan in place or pay in full. So we're hopeful we can get the properties down to a more manageable number. 11 is a lot to try to sell, and we're not in the business of selling properties, but we must move against some of these. They have delinquencies that are in excess of five years in some cases. And that, with that, I'll stop.
Okay. Upcoming agendas.
Can I just ask a question first?
Yeah, you have a question?
Sure. Yes. Stu, we get in our, in the packet, the permit totals at a glance, and then the amounts, the summary of building permits issued on a monthly basis. I have noticed that this year, we are already at 201 permits, granted therefore, all sorts of different things that you can't really quite judge. Is, that's, you know, we haven't been, we're well on our way to surpass last year and be more in the range of what we were back in 2012 and 2013, just on the number of permits. But my question has to do with, how do we, do we have the capacity to compare the value amounts from year to year? I'm not asking for that as a report, although it would be, you know, so that, so that, for instance, you know, I note that there are four single-family dwelling units valued at a little, at the moment, a little over 1.2 million. I'm just trying to figure out a way to analyze this data for economic development in a way that will make more sense. And is there a way to do that? Do we have the capacity to do that?
Yeah, I think, I think we can show probably a summary of data over perhaps as far as a 10-year period, but I'd have to take a look at the permitting software and talk with Dan about what capabilities we might have in that regard. But I'm sure there is a way to compare.
So we're already doing, we do it for this year. We have year-to-date volume on that first page. So actually, if it's possible, I don't know if we just want to do this once every six months, maybe?
It's not the most valuable data, it's self-reported, they tell us what they think it's going to be worth.
I see.
That's, that's...
Okay.
That's what I, that's partly why I asked the question. I wasn't sure how helpful it would be.
If you go back to the assessment office, and they can look at what their new assessments naturally, you're simply going to be a grand listener, that's really how I'm going to...
Because 14 decks versus one platinum project.
Yeah, it's a huge difference.
Yeah.
We record the self-reported data, as far as what they think it's worth in value, but that's very rarely a completely forthcoming, because they think that that's what the assessor's bench assessed the property for. It's absolutely not guaranteed.
Absolutely not. No.
To accept that.
Well, but what it does do, I mean, because it's broken down by construction type, I mean, you can also see if most of the construction are minor projects, or if there's some large things in there. It would be, it would be nice to look at, I mean, you know, I mean, we've had, yeah, we're definitely, I mean, you can see the COVID years, and then, you know, we're definitely coming back strong this year. It would be, it would be interesting to see if there's a way to get some sense of growth in economic development off of this.
The value of those, the numbers of permits. And I don't know what, that's why I asked the question.
That's a great idea.
It's, you know, we get the graphs, but we don't, it's really hard to figure out how to interpret any of this. And you're right, that's, I thought that all that was just self-reported. So, I don't know. I'm just putting it out there, I think there ought to be a way for us to utilize some of this, to sense where economic development is happening, and how it's happening, in what segments it's happening.
Yeah. That's a great idea. All right. To be pondered.
To be pondered.
Okay. All right. In terms of upcoming agendas, we know Lake Perrin is coming to give a presentation the next meeting. I don't know of anything else.
I don't have anything.
We got two weeks.
We'll, we'll overwhelm you, Jim.
Will we have a, an opening at the, at Willow Park? A ground, a ribbon cutting at Willow Park in two weeks?
No.
Oh, that's too bad.
But we do have, but...
Oh, well.
But we do have a special meeting coming up on the 19th.
Yes.
Yes. Do you want to?
Yes. I mean, if you know about it, Jeanne, why don't you just say it?
Oh, let's see. So we have a special meeting to discuss Ben High, coming up on Wednesday, the 19th, at 5:30 in this room. Yes? Because I had to remember it, that's why I'm looking at you.
Well, thank you.
It's already gone now, we have starting tomorrow, we want to...
Yes. Well, I've seen it, it's already out on Front Porch Forum, and hopefully, the banner will be... Good. Okay. So that is, we're hoping we will have a lot of folks come to that meeting and ask their questions. We'll all get informed. All right. Other business? Gary?
I'd just like to plug Harvest Fest one more time. I will be there at some point in the afternoon, helping carve pumpkins, they're giving me a knife.
You're signing a waiver, right?
I'm signing a waiver. But it is, I think it's going to be a great event, and the more, the merrier. Thank you.
All right. I get to be there at seven, at 6:45 in the morning.
6:30 for me, so...
Oh, it's 6:30?
If, not for what you're doing, but for what I'm doing.
Oh, okay, okay.
Woof.
All right.
I know.
We're getting pumpkin carving. Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a plug for the apple cider donuts at the Apple Barn. Congratulations to the new owner, whose name escapes me, but, hm?
Sarah Albright.
Albright?
Sarah.
Sarah Albright. Thank you. I don't think I could have survived the fall without apple cider donuts, so. They, she didn't miss a beat. They taste perfect.
Just want to wish my husband a happy birthday today, Mike Nygro, and I want to thank him for helping me with my bag back the past couple of days. Thanks for moving everything, thanks for helping me just do everything in general. Thanks, Mike.
And thanks to the Department of Public Works and their striping crew. Washington Avenue is now newly striped, and we're happy about it. Now, if people would just learn to slow down, that would be better. Oh, and, and my neighbor for his new little library and bench. So another reason to slow down and pick out a book and read it.
And lovely. And back to Jim, who I skipped over.
I just want to note the passing of quite an extraordinary character, Marie Legacy, Scott Legacy's mother, Coach Scott Legacy's mother. Some people around this table will remember that Marie was, oh, she was the detention teacher. And I remember that. But she, you know, she devoted a lot of time and energy to the wrestling team and to countless kids. They started the Booster Club, and you know, it was through their hard work that so many young kids got a break. And just want people to remember Marie, even if it's just for a few minutes. Thanks.
Lovely. Thank you. All right. Now, we have need of an executive session to discuss real estate. We will not be making any decisions when we come out, so I would look for a motion to go into executive session. Thank you.
Don't forget to vote.
Second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.